Call our meeting to order. If everyone will please rise and say our pledge of allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unredone, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You can see. Appreciate everyone coming out here on our first spring meeting of 2021. As you can see, we have a renovated new meeting space here. I hope everybody enjoys that, and I want to give kudos to the guys and gals that made that happen. So, thank you for that. Everyone that has in front of you the approval of the agenda for tonight, if there are any additions or changes to the agenda, I'll entertain those additions now, and we'll present that in other business at the end of the conclusion of the agenda. Is there any additions or?
I'd like to add one tiny thing, a small personnel matter under closed session, please.
Personnel matter?
Under closed session.
And in the closed session?
Yes, sir. As per the general statute.
Is there any other changes? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I have one addition for an audit contract approval.
Okay. We can add that under your manager's report if you'd like to.
Whatever the council desires. We just got that today as well. It's not on your agenda.
Well, let's put that under your manager's report right there, and you can do that there.
Okay.
If you don't mind, I think that's good, since you'll have the floor anyway. With that, I'll entertain a motion to approve our agenda.
Move second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? Show your hands, please, on approval. It's 5-0 for the agenda. Number three item tonight is approval of the minutes of our regular meeting from March 2nd to 2021, and our special meeting on March 15th of 2021 and March 22nd. Also included is the joint meeting that we just had last week with the county commissioners on March 29th, and I'll entertain an approval for all of those minutes.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor, show your hands, please. 5-0 on that. At this time, I'll open up the floor for public comments on our agenda items that are on the agenda, and those are the only things that I'm going to allow to be talked about right now in public comments. Any citizen wishing to comment at this time can come to the podium, state your name, and I'll give you three minutes to comment on any agenda item that we have here tonight. There being no movement, we will close that public comments support of our meeting, and we'll go into our community project presentation. And before I introduce this young lady right here, I just want to say what a fine job that these folks right here, led by this young woman, has done over the last three weekends in beautifying our county. At this time, it is my great honor and privilege to introduce Ms. Susan Miles.
Thank you. My gracious. I do know most of you. Thank you very much for allowing me a few minutes of time. We're going to talk a little bit about trash tonight, so let's take this off. Several people had made comments to me, starting at the first of the year, about the excessive trash that was all over our roads, all over the whole county. For a little bit of history, in 2017, a group called All Up or Huddle had headed up twice yearly trash pickups. One was in the spring at Earth Day, and one was in the fall right before the Heritage Festival. Mark Whittle also heads up a group called Keep Allegheny Litter Free. Janet, would you stand up now? You've got your jacket on. Anyway, it's the...
Oh, it's on the back of the jacket.
It reminds you to please keep Allegheny clean. Whittle asked Napco, and they printed at no charge these signs, which say on one side, "Keep Allegheny Clean," and on the other side, it says the same thing in Spanish. Only thing that's the same is Allegheny County, because it's spelled the same way, no matter what language you're in. Those were taken up, a lot of them were, last week when the wind was so strong, because we were afraid the signs would become trash. And we didn't think that was a good idea after picking up trash. But we ran out of T-shirts, and the Whittles have ordered additional T-shirts to be handed out to the people that are willing to pick up trash again. Both groups encourage people of all ages to work together for the entire community to care about our county and the appearance in the roads. In 2020, All Up did not have any meetings due to the COVID, and that's why they didn't head it up. That's why I took the ball and made it throw. But I was so pleased to have these groups, as well as, we had families that had small children and people in their 80s picking up trash, and also was Allegheny Lives and Rotary. So, it was just a great thing, I thought, to have that many people involved. We did do it on three consecutive Saturdays in the March, and the reason for that was so that somebody might be able to come on the first Saturday, but they might not be able to come the others, and that way it opened it up for more people. Also, the vegetation was not out in March, like it will be in April. So, we had some people that worked one hour, and we had others that worked all three weekends. I had a guy that came by today, and he got trash bags and told me what road he wanted to work on, and he's going to work on it between now and next weekend. But what we provided for everybody were bags, vests, some were provided, the vests that were provided were provided by the Department of Transportation, some pickup sticks, crackers, water, the signs, and the T-shirts. We encouraged everybody to please wear the shirts when they were out working, number one for visibility, and number two to let people know what it's about, keeping us clean. The amounts of trash, there were 14 people that worked the first week, and there were 58 bags of trash. The second week, there were 37 people with 108 bags of trash. The third week, there were 50 with 151. And then there were two people that came in after that. So, our totals were 103 volunteers and 329 bags of trash. How's that for good? Now, on top of that, that does not count the mattresses, or the tires, or the car parts that were on the side of the road, and we put those with, close to a bag, and then we called the DOT on Monday mornings. And the DOT would go by, and they would pick up what, we only took a very few bags to the trash. The rest of them were taken by DOT. DOT, between the first week and the second week, they picked up an additional 206 bags of trash. So, to me, that is scary, to see that much trash. So, if you're available, let's make another day of difference. On Earth Day, it's, Earth Day started in...
1970.
1970, and it's April 22nd. So, on April 17th, we're going to have another trash pickup day. And I know, yes, there will be more vegetation out, but hopefully we'll get more people out, and they'll either have on orange vests, or they'll have on these yellow jackets, so everybody can see that we're there, and we can all be safe. The efforts of the Earth Day is to just clean up the earth. We were given this earth, it's ours to take care of. If we don't take care of it, it's not going to be taken care of. I guess somehow I'd like to make an impression, or know how we can make an impression, to give people to care, to not throw out their trash in the first place. And I don't know how to do that. I want ideas, suggestions, something. I've used to see signs that said, you know, "Pick up your trash," or it's a, I mean, it was a hundred, a large fine. I don't remember what it was, but it was a large fine if you threw out trash. But you know, if somebody sees an officer standing there, they're not going to throw out their trash. You know, they've got, most people have got more common sense than that. It's funny, well, not funny, but true. When you drive down Memorial Park Drive, and you go past the cemetery, before you get to Little River Drive, there's somebody that drinks those little boxes of wine. And before they get to Little River Drive, and after they get to the cemetery, chunk! Every time. So, there's a lot of those picked up, you know? So, somewhere or another, we've got to make an awareness to people so they care enough to stop throwing out trash. So, this is a public thank you to all the people that worked so hard to make a difference, and an ask for more help, please, on April 17th, and we will be doing it again on September before the Heritage Festival, so we can make a difference. And thank you all so much for allowing me. Are there any questions anybody has?
Susan, I commend you taking on the leadership of this endeavor. You've done a great job, and you know, it makes, cleaning up our little town and our county right there, it makes everybody proud.
I had a lot of help.
That's great.
Is there a way to recognize these people that came out and volunteered?
We've just told them thank you, and that's why Mark and his wife ordered the T-shirts. They get that, and I don't know of a way to thank him except for, and the thing about it is, nobody did it for the thanks, and we had one family that had three small children. They were, I'm going to say, three, five, and seven aged children, and they picked up right around their house. But they got five bags, you know? So, to me, that was just great, to be teaching people when they're young what a difference they can make. Even when they're young, they can make a difference.
I think a lot of that trash, and I mean, I'm not sure, but I think people hauling stuff on trucks and blowing off the trucks.
Uh huh.
We need to try to make sure that you have some kind of cover, is my opinion.
Or at least if they see it blow off, come on, stop. We had a bunch of trash put into the, I mean, it was a community person that should know better, and they put it in the dumpster at the subway, and I've seen people's bags of trash fall off when they were taking it to the landfill, and it fell off, but they didn't bother to stop to pick it up. You're going to miss a mattress when it comes off your car, guys.
Yeah.
You're going to miss a bag of trash most of the time unless it was heat full.
Well, and I think that's important to point out, too, because you see so much negativity, and you hear so many people say, well, tourists don't care, they're just throwing it out. With that amount of trash, that's not from tourists.
Not all of it.
Especially this past year, when we haven't had any tourists. That's locals. So, we need to hold each other accountable.
We did.
I'd really like to see some kind of recognition for these people, either we sponsor it or somebody sponsors it, just some kind of public recognition of it.
Why don't you all go there?
I think it'd be a good way to advertise it and promote it, and I'd really like to see some kind of promotion, some kind of recognition for these people. I don't know what it would be. Maybe you can come up with a good idea for that?
Okay. I'll think about it and see.
You know, a reception with some cookies and crackers and something, something odd. But I really think we need to do something to recognize these people, because they took their time and came out, some of them all three weekends, some of them just once, and then some of them went off on their own. Just like you said, you've got people picking up this week. I think we need to do something to recognize them.
I don't think use has covered it well, but yes, additional recognition would be great. I think it would be appreciated by most of the folks, I really do. Thank you all so much.
Thank you. Appreciate you, Susan. Appreciate that. And I can attest to that, too, having, having took some time out myself. Me and my son went and done Veterans Park last year, and my rental truck was full, including with tire rims, rubber tires, everything. As you can imagine, we pulled it out of that creek down there, and plastic signs, political signs, and I encourage everybody, as a politician, once the election is over, I would just wish, win or lose, you just go out and get your signs. I mean, that would help out a whole lot, too, and that's something that everybody needs to be made aware of. But Susan, thank you for you and your group. We appreciate that very much.
Thank you.
Up next, we have another wonderful young lady that's going to come up and talk to us, Ms. Lisa Boden from the Chamber of Economic Development. And yes, she is young, because she's the same age I am.
I might actually be a little bit younger, just saying.
Right.
Well, good evening, and thank you always for having me and allowing me to report to you what we're up to at the Allegheny Chamber for Economic Development. Each one of you has a report in front of you. I won't review all of it, because if I did, I'd be up here for quite some time, but I did want you to know that we're busy, and we are trying our best to market Allegheny County and Sparta, North Carolina. We are working with the Blue Ridge Parkway Association to build our relationship and perhaps partner on some events and marketing. We are in the heart of the Blue Ridge Parkway. It seems like a relationship that should be, that should be a lot stronger than it has been in the past, so we are working on having a larger presence on their website and in their publications, and hopefully I will be able to get onto their board for the association in the near future. We are working on some radio messaging. It's a lot like, like in the fall and at Christmas, about coming, spending time in the mountains, shopping our stores, eating our restaurants. You can ignore the choose and cut, I forgot to delete that, and again, around heart of the Blue Ridge Parkway. And we do that, those advertisements, and it's no cost to our, to our merchants in town. We are also working with, I just want to note that WI FM in Elkin, and WKBC in Wilkesboro, and 580 The Farm in West Jefferson. WI FM, you may also see William Bottomley going around town. He's working with the individual businesses, trying to get them some special advertising rates, so they can advertise their businesses on their own. So, we appreciate him doing that. We are working with High Country Host, which is the regional visitor center located near Blowing Rock. They help the high country market as a whole, kind of co-op efforts, and we are updating information with them on Sparta and Allegheny, around day trip information, special events, running half ads in their spring co-op, and I did attach a copy of that for you to look at. We're also working with the High Country Host on the Leave No Trace Behind marketing. Leave No Trace is a littering initiative that when you go visit somewhere, when you go camping, when you get on the river, when you go outside of your home, we don't want to know that you've been there once you leave, you know? Pick up your trash, put out your fires. It's a, it's a huge initiative, and High Country Host is actually helping us market that throughout the high country to help with the littering, with the littering problem. It is not just Allegheny, it's everywhere. You can drive from here to anywhere these days and see trash all over the place. And, and thank you, Cole, for mentioning that it's not just tourists. So, this initiative is for tourists and for locals alike. It is everyone's responsibility, and we do have to hold each other accountable. And I do want to just say publicly thank you to Susan and her group for everything they've done over the last three weekends. You can tell a huge difference in our county already. Working with Blue Ridge Digest, I've also attached that for your review, and we are working on the Allegheny County Magazine, trying to get that from the printer. Hopefully, will be released here in just a couple of weeks. Our Allegheny County Magazine has several content articles highlighting different parts of Allegheny County, and it also highlights our chamber members and provides listing and advertisements for them. And we give out about 9,000 of those a year to visitor centers across North Carolina and other chambers. I won't go over, just chamber website, we are updating that as we go, still really focusing on a lot of shop local messaging for our locals, to go see your, you know, your local shops, eat in our local restaurants. Really helps the community when we do that. It's, you know, very hard for them to sponsor softball teams, basketball teams, all these rec teams, if they're not, if they're not making money as a business, so it's important to shop local. Chamber memberships, we continue to work on enhancing those benefits so that we can show the value of being a member or an investor. We're enhancing marketing through social media, briefing our videos, YouTube and Instagram, and we have two new members for April, and that's the Pioneer Creek Art Studio and Gallery and WKBC Radio out of Wilkesboro. Just shows you a couple of things that are up and coming. And we are averaging about 35 visitors per month for February and March in the visitor center. A lot of those people are here to, they've made appointments and they're viewing property, or they are looking for property. So, a lot of people are looking to move to the mountains, and that's not just here in Allegheny, that's all across the high country in any rural area that, anyone you talk to, people are trying to move in. Events, Music on Main is tentatively scheduled for July through September. We are planning one for October, and that will be in conjunction with the Cycle NC. They have chosen Sparta again in 2021 to host their event. The start date, will start here in Sparta, and we will be having a meeting with Cycle NC next week, I'm sorry, week after next, to talk about the logistics of that event. I say tentatively scheduled, you know, we're at the mercy of the North Carolina governor in a lot of things, and we do want to follow those, those mandates and, and be mindful of, of that. Blue Ridge Midnight Runners Cruise In. A lot of you may know Jim Cox. He is kind of the organizer of the Midnight Runners, Blue Ridge Midnight Runners Cruise In Group. They have a lot of collectible cars, antiques, that they take to towns, and they've been, they have a huge presence over in Ash County, especially over in West Jefferson. They did all last year, and I just had some discussions with Jim, and hey, would you be interested in coming to Sparta? With those conversations, he did post something on Facebook that, hey, this could be a possibility, and there was, of course, some chatter about, you know, we don't want to be ran off, will the town accept this, and so on and so forth. So, how this would work, because I did bring it for approval tonight, if this, if, if the merchants on Main Street agree to all of this, but they would come to town on the first Saturday of every month, and they would line up, I believe, they mentioned, you know, somewhere in a large parking area, they'll line up, and then they'll cruise through town, and then they'll park in town. And Jim's, their main thing is that they, you know, while, while, you know, the men look at their cars, and they talk, car shops, whatever, the women go out into town, they shop, they all eat in our restaurants, and so on and so forth. So, it's really to bring more business to our, to our local merchants and to our local restaurants. They would arrive around 3:00, and then make their way into town and park. I sent out an email to our local town merchants and restaurants asking their opinion on this, because if they're not willing to stay open later, or if they're not willing to have, you know, be able to accommodate this type of influx, then it's for naught, you know? If no one's open and no one's willing to do that. So far, I've had five or six respond that they absolutely want this in our town, to grow business, to get people into their place of business. Like I said, it would be the first Saturday of each month, beginning in May, and I believe they run through October. I think that would be up to us, though, you know? If we wanted to change that timeline, we could. And so, I think, you know, there's, we've asked permission from certain places for them to park. We would provide maps for them where you can and where you cannot park, what you can and cannot do in town. And I don't believe it's necessary at all to close down the streets for that type of event. Like I said, they cruise through, and then they park, and they come out, they do business with our, with our merchants and restaurants, and then they leave. So, you know, a few things to work out, but I wanted to get it approved, or at least some discussion with the town around this, before I move any further with any more discussions with Jim and with that group. But I will tell you that our restaurants and our, so far, what I've heard from our merchants, they're very excited about this. The businesses would be responsible for their capacity, for mask wearing, you know, on their own. So, really, that wouldn't change any at all. Napco has already offered to help us with signage for those events, no parking, or wear your masks, stay your distance, whatever we need to do to make this a safe event for everyone. They're willing to help us with that as well. So, I guess this is just up for discussion, or up for any type of approval?
Do you have any idea about how many?
It's hundreds. It's hundreds of people, from what I hear.
How many cars?
Oh, no, I don't know about cars. I would imagine...
I would say around 100 cars.
I've not, I've...
Around 100 cars.
Yeah.
Well, you're talking about parking.
So, we talked about that a little bit. We have a brand-new parking lot on 18 that has 62 spots.
I was also thinking about the churches.
Yep, and so I have put out an email to some of those churches, asking if they would give us permission for that. If they don't, then we'll block it off, or we'll give them a map that says, "Do not park here." It'll be made very clear where they can and cannot go. And I haven't received feedback from everyone yet.
How long are you asking the merchants to stay open?
It's really up to them, but some of them said they would even stay open until 9:00 if need be, depending on how long. I don't think that's necessary, but some of them said they would, if that meant that they would get the business and that they, because they need it.
So, this is a first Saturday?
First Saturday of each month.
And then first Friday's starting?
Is Music on Main. So, it would be a full weekend of things to do, be like a full weekend of events. And really, the Cruise In isn't what I would call a scheduled event, it's people cruising through town and parking and coming and shopping. It's not, we wouldn't have bands or anything like that. The businesses could, if they wanted to, but I figured they needed a contact person in town so that this stays organized and that it stays, you know, controlled, and that they have a liaison between us and, between them and the town.
So, what are you asking of us?
I'm just asking if it's okay we do this. There was, I don't know what the...
I think just consensus would be enough.
Yeah.
I hear if everybody's willing to let that happen, I don't think there needs to be a motion of anything.
I think it's a great idea, and I'm hoping a lot of merchants will fail.
And if they don't, then that's something that I have to communicate back to the Midnight, to the Blue Ridge Midnight Runners Group, and see if this is still a town that they want to come and visit. They, they bring a ton of business into a town when they come, so...
By show of hands, on the council, just show your approval, if you give consensus to this event, this thing.
I think that way to show off streetscape.
I think it's a good thing.
Yes. And they are very aware that they can't burn tires, that they can't do all of that through town. Jim's very vocal about that, you know, we have to behave when we go into a town, and so...
Why would it put a lot of strain on your department?
No. Jim's a retired trooper, he'll keep the guys in line.
Yeah, he seems to, yeah. He seems to be very willing to do that.
I think you have a blessing in the council, too.
When you get it all set up, you're going to publicize this?
Yes, locally, more locally than anything. I think we'll just keep it, a lot of people from here participate in that group, a lot of people.
So, this starts in July?
He wanted to start in May.
This starts in May.
We may, we may put it out a month, to June, I'm not sure yet. I'll talk to Jim about that and kind of see what the merchants want to do, but they are all for it, each one that's, but there are a lot of people I haven't heard from yet. So, what I don't want is any, you know, a lot of negativity around it. I want to make sure it's a safe event, but our businesses need people. They need, they need, they need it.
Music on Main starts in July. Music on Main starts in July, and this starts in...
No. He wants to start in May.
Sure.
Yeah, and again, I mean, I couldn't come before now to talk to you all, but if, we could, we could push it out to June if he, or we could start in May. So, I'll talk to Jim about that and see.
Just keep us updated on that, and I think Ryan will be your main contact on that.
Okay.
Let him know what's going on.
You have our blessing.
All right, great. Wonderful.
Anything there that tries to be normal is great.
Normal's good, isn't it? And just to let you know, of course, Mountain Heritage Festival is scheduled for September 11th, and you can always go onto our calendar on our website for the most current event information. Allegheny Arts Council, Allegheny Riders, all of them are starting to add events to our calendars, and so I think everyone's ready, to your point, Mike, to get back to some normalcy. And to talk about just streetscape beautification really quickly, monies from the SRC, which will, which now belong to the Allegheny Chamber of Economic Development, but they are earmarked for a streetscape beautification that will remain that way. I believe it was around 10,000, is, is that what we discussed? So, we are going to meet this week on Thursday, Susan and I, and Karen Lees and Jane Wyatt, to decide priority areas for spending. It is not cheap at all to beautify a town, and so we're going to just prioritize what we need the most right now, until further arrangements can be made. We are also, I know Cole's been working with us as well, trying to get donations of plants and different things, to see if people can come together and, and get this going for us. That includes banners, planters, plants and flowers, and the brackets that are required to hold those banners and planters. So, a lot, a lot of expense, and, but we are working on it. I know it's not happening as fast as everyone would like, but does it ever? So, any questions for me?
Thank you, Lisa. Appreciate the effort.
Thank you.
Good job. Appreciate that. This time, I'm going to turn it over to our town manager, Ryan Ruhl, because he's going to go over. Jim, I was number seven and eight, right, first one.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Counsel, in your packet tonight, you receive a memorandum and a contract from the League of Municipalities for an actuarial study for our special separation allowance for law enforcement. This is something we have to do annually. It does project kind of the town's cost... It does project kind of the town's cost per participant. By going with the League, we do join with other municipalities, so it does provide some financial incentive for us to do this. With that, I'll be glad to answer any questions about this.
We do this, we do this every year?
Every year.
What does it cost us?
$315.
Okay, nice in the budget.
Yes, this one, we have to do this, you have to approve something to this budget.
Motion to throw, I say, a motion and a second, on favor, show of hands.
Five oh on that, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Council, also in your packet was a request for budget amendment number two. This amendment is quite extensive, as you can tell, but it is due to us getting near the end of the fiscal year. It's for us to kind of reconcile individual line items within the overall budget. This does not impact the total budget that was adopted and approved by the council. We do need approval to move these monies inside that budget for both general fund and the enterprise fund.
Have a motion on the floor to move those monies? Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second, is there any discussion? Show of hands, please, to do that, five oh. And, Mr. Mayor, I think in agenda item number nine, we have a declaration of some property.
We do. Council, as discussed in our budget work sessions, the actual structure on the, the certment property, which we refer to as the certment house, has sustained substantial water issues, water damage, that really degrades that facility. It's, it's really no longer safe for use, and we did get cost estimates for repair, which was a pretty substantial figure for our anticipated use of the structure. With all that being the case, and it residing in our park, I would consider us removing that structure by, a training exercise by the fire department within the county. That's a great opportunity for them to train, and also alleviates us of that structure. Before we can proceed with that, we do have to declare that structure as surplus and dispose of it by destruction. Inside that, if, if we can join 9A and 9B, if you can look out the window, you'll see a 2002 Chevrolet dump truck. It has 160,000 miles, and it has done nothing more than occupy space out in our, our lot for some time. That piece of equipment does have an engine that is blown. We technically don't need that piece of equipment, so the cost of repairing that equipment is not financially fruitful for the town. So I am requesting that we also declare that property a surplus and dispose of it by sealed bid. And I'll be happy to answer any questions about either of those surplus property or equipment.
Mr. Mayor, in so much as I think Ms. Sheik mentioned earlier that we spent $32,000 on the house, the certment house, at which point that we bought it, or thereabouts, I would like to table that final decision on that house. I have spoken with a couple of council members, haven't spoken with everybody, about possibly some use for that, not the use that was discussed earlier, but if it, if it would be the pleasure of the board, I would like to table that for the next meeting.
That is a $60,000 recommendation to safely repair that house for any use. We'll do whatever the, the council chooses, but...
And the 60, the 60,000 is going to be for four?
Uh, removing and repairing the water damage and investigating any kind of mold, that water's been leaking for a pretty significant amount of time.
So you're saying if we renovate this house, it's going to cost $60,000?
Minimum.
Then, if we do what you've recommended, I assume, Brian, what's it going to cost us to turn up the mess and that kind of?
An asbestos inspection and a basement, probably $7,000 at most. Fire department will burn it for free, and we may have two or three loads to the landfill, so $75 sounds three for tipping fee. We're, we're out for less than $8,000.
So I have a motion to table this. Do I have a second?
Well, I'll say it right there, I mean, if Millie's got something she wants to talk about, it's... Well, you got, I know what you got in mind, but you need to tell everybody.
I don't know if it's appropriate, I guess it's appropriate, stop. We have a lot of people in this community that don't have any place to live. And now, if you're absolutely certain it's going to cost $60,000 to make this house livable, then my idea of renting it to someone who does not have a home, I think, if any, well, we don't have any real estate paper out here, Susan can attest to this, the rental situation in this town is unbelievably tight.
Sir.
And, and it seems a shame that we have a fairly decent structure, and it could be used by someone, and someone could, could rent it and live there and have a home, and we've already invested, however much we invested to buy it, it's, it seems a shame to tear it down. Now, the $60,000 figure does put a certain, a wrinkle in that, that process, and I'm sure you got the $60,000 quote from someone.
Sir.
Didn't dream it up, but I, I would like for us just to, before we burn those, or burn it down and do away with it, if, you know, if we could look at perhaps using it for somebody to live in. It was just my thought, and I did, didn't have an opportunity to talk to Mr. McGrady or Mr. Colley about it, but I did talk with Mr. Brady and Mr. Edwards about it, so that's, that's my fault, and, you know, I'm sure the $60,000 figure is very accurate, based on whoever you spoke to, but shouldn't we look at this just a little closer?
Two things, two things pop up in my mind right off the bat is liability, and who's going to assume the liability of that house? If we put that, if we put homeless people in there, or put somebody that needs a house in there, who's going to accept the liability if they fall and get hurt, and they turn around and sue, or whatever?
When we, when we, when I first came on the council, we rented the house to the arch council for a dollar, for a year. So I'm assuming... That's, that's true, but I'm assuming from that, that our current insurance would cover...
It wasn't on the insurance, man, because it was a vacant place, but it never got insurance.
So we don't have any insurance on it.
There's nothing on it.
So what you're always saying is there's no possible way under the sun that we can do anything with a fairly decent structure, other than burn it down. Is that what I'm hearing?
Randy, what would be the liability to the town on that?
We probably need to check with our insurance company in regards to a policy for renters. We're not in the renting business, and I'm certain that our current insurance that we have with the town doesn't just automatically cover us being landlords.
But we rented it to the arch council.
I don't think they went in, I think there was mold, and, I think there was mold and water damage.
But they were able to pull the nothing in.
They didn't go in.
We rented it.
We rented it, but they didn't accept it because it had so many problems.
So, but we rented it, not, not, not...
No, we didn't, we didn't, we didn't execute anything with them formally, that was the goal, but they didn't accept anything, and we didn't either.
Well, it's up to you guys, it seems a shame to me, it's hard for me to explain to the taxpayers, we bought this house over here, and it's sitting here, and we kind of let it run down, and, you know, there's people needing houses, but we really don't have the $60,000 to fix it, so we're going to burn it down, but, you know, if that's the only option that we have here, then...
Susan, you rent houses?
Yes.
What is your obligation as a renter?
As a renter?
As a renter, what is your obligation, what all do you have to, are you responsible for?
Do you ask them to pay out coverage also? There are no rentals available, but you would have to be really careful about who you would put in it, because that's what, one of the purposes that we looked at for the ministerium on the house on the street behind Parkers. There's just a lot of legalities that have to be looked at, it's not just a quick answer, it's, there's a lot of stuff has to do with that to determine.
Mr. Mayor, I may, I, I think Millie's point, or Councilwoman Richardson's point, is very valid. There, there is certainly a housing shortage and, and people in need. Where the, the $60,000 came from, for some context, everyone knows Dana from OSBM. When they first came to town, they were actually, Dana Phillips, the earthquake guy.
Okay.
He, he was looking for an office and potentially a place to stay during his time here, and there was some consideration of that property, and he wanted to know what it would cost to fix that facility to that standard. That is when I engaged actually two different contractors to look at that property, and the lowest bid was $60,000 to even start. So there is some legitimacy to the cost estimate without necessarily tearing into it, and that was the context of why I know that.
So...
Where was the contract at, Paul?
Actually, one was Wishon Carter, which is out of Yakima, and the other one was Caldwell.
My main, my main concern is this, that, that as a town, we don't need to get into the rental business ourselves, because then we become liable for a lot of stuff. And I have a motion and a second to table this, and at this time, I'll entertain the vote. All in favor of tabling it, show of hands.
I'd be in favor of that, just to...
To table, right?
Just to table, to look at the legality of it.
All, all non-in favor, show of hands is two, right? So there'll be three, two, that this motion gets tabled. Now, we do need to make a separate motion for the Chevrolet dump truck.
I'll make the motion, we settle that.
I have a motion and a second on that. Any discussion on the truck? Show of hands in favor, five oh on the truck.
I don't believe we can rent the truck.
At this time, I'm going to ask everybody to, in your packet, you have the financial report. I'd like for you to review that. If you have any questions at this time, for the finance officer, you can ask Peggy, before we go into agenda item number 10.
Hold it. I don't know, don't you?
Yes.
There will be no motion or anything on that, so if there being no questions for our finance officer. I, I have one question for her, before we begin the tax collection interlocal agreement consideration that was presented at the joint meeting. Are our taxes up to date?
Yes, they're up.
How far behind is the county in paying us our taxes?
February, February, or March.
February's or March, and we agreed, again, to let them continue collecting our taxes tentatively at 3%. What about, is it true, after I've done some digging today, that we haven't been billed for our solid waste from the county?
Not since December.
Since December, we've not received a bill for our solid waste fees.
Ms. Sheik, do you have any, any fear, any anxious feelings at all, that we will not get our money?
I don't have any fear or anxious feeling that we won't get our money, but we need our money in order to run our budget.
I understand that.
It has been upon agreement, that this has been paid monthly, am I correct?
Yeah, they're supposed to do it monthly.
It is supposed to be done monthly.
Now, let me under, I will understand some of this. Like I said, I'm a little dense sometimes. Current contract that we're under is 1.5%, and that runs through June, okay? If we agree to this new contract, it runs for three years at 3%, and that's what it is. That's, that's, that's what I understand, but we are still under the 1.5 until June.
I make the motion, we accept the agreement that was presented, and I think that in our packet, it was, our attorney had looked at the wording and everything was okay, so I'll make that motion today that we accept that, and that's my motion.
I'll say it.
I have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Show of hands, in favor? Five oh.
Tell me about this solid waste bill.
We should be billed monthly for our solid waste, I have not received a bill since December. The town is billed for solid waste.
I know, but normally, how much is it?
$60, or $67.
How much?
$16, or $67.
So we're talking about, we're talking about less than a hundred bucks?
Yeah, yeah, pretty much.
Okay.
My, let me go back, I want to clarify something right now, is if we're going to do business with somebody, they are held to the same accountability that we are in conducting business. If it's a mutual agreement, if it's a handshake, if it's a contract, abide by what you have stated, period. I, for one, have dealt with this now, for, this is my fourth year as mayor, going on. And if we can't trust to have our money sent to us on a timely manner, then how can we conduct our business? We can't. We had to fight tooth and nail to get our cares money. Clear your throat all you want to, I'm just telling you right now. I am, I'm to the point, as mayor, they have an obligation to pay their bills on time as does we do. It is my responsibility, and I think the council's responsibility, to protect its citizens from getting behind on any kind of bill whatsoever, because we don't know what tomorrow holds, nobody knew what COVID was going to do last year, nobody. When that cares money come in, that helped us out of a bad situation, and it took us three months to get it. And the state ordered them to give it to us, period. Now, in this new contract, it is stipulated, if I'm not correct, Mr. Manager, that we ought to be paid monthly, is that correct?
That's correct.
Same as it is right now.
That is correct.
Are we going to allow this to continue? That was my point, and I'll leave it at that. Now, we're going...
Is there some way to attack, attach an interest to that number?
Not unless we put it in the contract, and it's not in there right now as it is. There's no penalty for anything.
But this is the contract they agreed to, and this is the contract we agreed to.
This is the contract that they presented, and this is the contract that...
What's happened in the past is, is not the point, we're, we're starting a new contract, and I think the county explained that they had had some changes and different things, that had caused problems there, and being the one person in this room that served on both these boards, we do have to work together, period.
Absolutely.
So that's it.
But we cannot keep doing the things that we're doing, of giving free water taps, free water, and all these other things, and keep getting burnt in the end, when our contracts are canceled and the rates go up. We can't do that, we can't run a business like it, we can't, or a town like it.
I think Mr. Carter explained that the rates went up because they were spending more to do this than we had previously been paying them.
They have the same amount of people that they've had for 13 years.
Apparently, the other county managers weren't that concerned about giving us $7,000 for it.
It's a done deal, it's a done deal, you voted on it, so you, you're going to have to explain to the taxpayers of Sparta what the increase is all about. I did my due, I did my due diligence, I tried to explain it to them, I stood up for our town and our people, I'm happy I did what I did, and I'll do it every time I get a chance. Now, if anybody has any questions, they can come to you guys and ask y'all. I'm, I'm good with it, I'm good. So we'll go right into our manager's report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Council, also in your contract, or in your packet, was a policy concerning commercial accounts that fall into a delinquent status. We currently don't have any kind of policy... Uh, we currently, uh, don't have, uh, any kind of policy relating to, uh, delinquent commercial account as we do with residential. So what we, uh, are, are often faced with is commercial accounts that, uh, they begin to rack up a, a pretty significant water and sewer bill, and we have no contact with them. So we don't know if, if it's a leak that we should be trying to assist them in identifying if their business is not performing well, uh, or whatever the case may be. So the bill continues to add up. We have no contact, and before you know it, this business is facing, uh, a substantial, uh, bill, and they may go out of business and, and that defaults to the town with no action for recruitment. So we need a policy that allows us to engage these commercial customers before their bill gets so astronomical so that we can, um, kind of help them if, if they need help. So the draft, uh, policy you see is kind of an escalating, uh, attempt at contact. So for the first thirty days of delinquency, we send a notice saying, hey, you're a delinquent account. Please contact the billing office to set up a payment plan or let us know, do you suspect a leak or whatever. If we don't hear from that party, uh, or we don't receive payment, the next thirty days, we send them a second notice that gives our intent to discontinue their service. Come in, set up a payment plan, let us know what's going on. After ninety days of no response or no payment, we then discontinue, uh, discontinue service in attempt to get them to come in, talk to us, set up a payment plan, or allow us to assist them. Uh, the payment plan has worked really well on the residential side, and we feel it can also work on the commercial side.
This is similar to a residential plan?
It pretty much mirrors it, except it gives them a longer timeframe.
This, this is a policy?
It is a policy.
So we need a motion to approve this policy?
I do need y'all to...
I'll make that motion.
Second. I have a motion here in a second down here. Any further discussion? Show of hands, please, to, for Matt. Five oh. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Council. Uh, also, uh, in your, your packet was the current, uh, loan service contract that is set to expire June thirtieth, twenty twenty-one. Obviously, that is mid, uh, loan service season. From our conversations during our, our budget work session, um, I think it's an opportunity for us to evaluate the services we want. It also allows the contractor, uh, who has been under his bid process for three years, to reevaluate those. What has changed in three years? His expense may have went up or down. Uh, so it gives both parties an opportunity to reevaluate what they need contractually. Uh, so I request that we send notice to the current contractor of our intent to re-advertise four bids and allow me to, to go ahead and proceed with an RFP to get a new contract in.
Motion. Are we also looking at taking over some of the mowing ourselves?
From our, our conversations and budget work session, that is a direction I would like to, to pursue.
So is that something that when you contact our current contractor, that you're going to make him aware that there might be stipulations for we're going to take over some of our own mowing?
He is under contract until June thirtieth, and he will continue to perform services as is currently. But after that date, we will have the contract, and that is our, uh, place to express our intent to, to take some of that back on.
Got you.
I don't see any sense in making a motion there for it. I think you just need to go ahead and get your contracts in before you bring it back up.
We need a motion.
It is contractually, so we do need, uh...
I was trying to make one.
So we, she, she's got a motion on the floor, too.
That we let Brian, Ryan, uh, notify the contractor that this will be renegotiated and that the stipulations in the contract may change, and he'll be notified of such. Is that the motion?
Motion in a second. Any further discussion? Show of hands, please, on that. Five oh.
It's all going to change.
Yeah, it will.
Uh, as the item of, of new business that was added, uh, last year, you guys engaged Gibson and Company on a three-year contract for auditing services. Uh, they provided, uh, this year's contract for our auditing, and we need to, to approve this so that Peggy can, uh, can submit this back and we can start our contra, our, our audit process.
Surprising that to say?
Thirty-two thousand eight hundred fifty bucks. It's really unchanged.
That's per year for three years?
Yeah.
And it's less than that, but we have a single audit. We possibly have a lot of money we are coming in for the street skate, also from the CARES Act, and any federal funds that we get, we have to have a single audit.
So thirty, thirty-two five for three years.
And that, that is...
Worst case scenario.
Worst case scenario.
I have the motion?
I have the motion down here from Terry on that. I have a second. And a second. Any further discussion? A show of hands, please, on that one. Five oh to approve the audit.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Last, uh, piece for me, uh, is some events. Uh, partners for children, um, it is Child Abuse Prevention Month. Uh, Saturday, this Saturday, April tenth, from eleven AM to one PM, they are wishing to use the farmer's market area to distribute bag of lunches for, uh, child abuse awareness, uh, and have requested, uh, to use that facility.
Is the farmer's market not going on?
We can not confirm that yet.
You think it started yet?
We don't think so. Yeah. I can't say it's not, but I can't say it's not.
I don't, I don't believe they start to the end of the month. I don't believe.
Motion to approve.
A motion in a second. All in favor, show of hands on that.
And then the, uh, the annual Shriners Club paper sale, uh, will be going on May thirtieth or April thirtieth and May first, uh, on the corner of Whitehead and, and Main Street. And they have requested, uh, the, the ability to, to sell.
Have a motion on that in a second. All in favor for the Shriners, once again, this year? Five oh on that.
Mr. Mayor, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Ryan, other business, uh, we have none other than the closed session part. I just want to commend our town manager, our finance staff, our crew up front, our maintenance crew for all the hard work that they have done to renovate our building. If you haven't had a chance to go upstairs yet, I suggest you go upstairs. It's about three quarters done up there. Police department also got remade over, so I want to say kudos to all y'all. Appreciate the hard work. I know there was a lot of moving on the boys' park, but thank you. At this time, I'll open up the floor for public comment. At this time, you may entertain any item that you wish. Please state your name, and I'll give you three minutes here in your public comment.
Tom Zach, Halsey Street, speeders are just as fast as ever. I'm just curious if anything has, uh, been, uh, taken care of as far as the speeding is concerned on that street. I, I came up with several ideas for you, but the best one I like is making one-way street from Memorial Park Drive to eighteen. That would take care of all the speeders. Yeah, they still fly from Memorial Park Drive to the stop sign, but nowhere is near as bad as coming off of eighteen.
I know you had several good suggestions. I, I don't, a lot of it has to do with the DOT, and they're hard to deal with.
Has anything, has the DOT been approached about any of the suggestions I made?
Uh, not, they have.
So is it a waiting game?
All I can tell you is the same thing I told you the last meeting, the meeting before that, and the meeting before that. As, as soon as something comes up, Mr. Zach, we're going to take care of, try to take care of the problem. Our chief of police sits right back there and has assured me that he has patrolled there, he has sat there. It may not be the times that you see him, but he's been out there, and he's even been there the times that you said the, the traffic was the worst. So catching a speeder is like catching a cold. You may or may not get them.
Well, I, I realize that his vehicle can only point one way, and if he's parked facing traffic or, uh, facing the other way, the minute they come off of eighteen and see his car, they slam on the brakes. I sit on my front porch a lot, and all you see is brake lights going down when, when the chief is out there waiting. Our radar gun parked in my driveway would get them every time. Thank you.
All right, thanks. Anyone else that would like to come to the podium at this time? There being no further movement, we will close our public comments. And at this time, before we go into closed session, uh, I just want to say again, thank you. Allegheny is green on the board here in the state, North Carolina, with COVID cases. We're the only county in the state that's green, so that means we're doing something right up here, and thanks to all the citizens and the healthcare workers and everybody involved with that. We will be taking a vote when we come out of closed session. If you'd like to hang around, you'd be welcome back in after we get out of closed session to entertain that vote. So at this time, I'll entertain a motion to go into closed session for Grand Statute one four three dash three one eight dash one one.
So that includes the personnel?
That includes the personnel along with the, uh, land acquisition considerations.
Yeah, I'll make that motion.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, show of hands. Five oh, we will be in closed session.